Is there any agenda additions or deletions? All right, hearing none. I maintain a motion to approve the May twenty fourth, twenty twenty one minutes.
Go ahead, Robert.
I was just gonna say, so moved subject, any corrections anybody may have? I don't think there were any, but unless I missed something.
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any corrections or deletions?
No.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Don't type it twice. A highway. John, excavator salesman.
And we've got Jeremy on Zoom over here, so I'm not sure who's taking the lead here, but.
Go for it then.
So, my name is John Weldon. I'm with Contractor Sales. Been talking to Cash about purchasing an excavator to replace their three oh seven. It's quite tired. And I'm essentially here just to answer any questions that you have about the purchase and to see if you are to purchase, we will need a letter of intent to move forward, and then we can kind of figure out how you want to go about it, that type of thing. But essentially, if you have any questions about the purchase first, I guess we can go ahead and.
First of all, I'd like to ask the road commissioner, what do you think of this particular deal?
This, it's a Link Belt. It's right in our size class. Did comparison with other brands. What I found was the next, one of the brands was a little bit bigger and a little pricier. I think this will satisfy our needs for the town of, it's zero swing. Actually, all three of the quotes I got were zero, zero swings. That means they're not out enough. When you're swinging, we can stay off this side of the road in one lane.
That's the benefits.
The additions that we went, of course, you got your digging bucket. We, and the ditching bucket has its own cylinders on it for angles and stuff. So we will get, not have the Wayne Royal like we have now. So you have so many moving parts and wear, wear points. So we're eliminating that. Also, there'll be a hydraulic thumb mounted on the machine, not a manual thumb. We don't have a thumb at this time, and they're very handy and not a whole lot more money to add that extra on. Steel tracks with a push blade also, which they all come with pretty much that small with a push blade.
What year is this?
This is. This is brand new.
Brand spanking new.
Two thousand twenty one. It just came in in the last couple of weeks. So right before any price increases are to hit or anything else like that, so. You guys are getting in under the wire, which is nice.
For a change.
We were actually, one of, one of my crew members, myself, actually went down and looked at the machine. We looked at the three different ones that we got quotes on, and it's quite impressive. Have a fellow that's very knowledgeable about machines, excavators. He works, he's a mechanic. He used to own a dealership and he that, he highly suggested that I, that we, the town take a look at Link Belt machines of what he's seen out in the field and stuff and working on them and and everything else.
How about other communities around?
There's actually no other communities around here close by that has one of these. I did find one actually in Wallingford that one contractor has. Which is just a little bit smaller.
Now what's, what are we gonna do with the old one?
That will be put up for private sale.
Okay. All right, I didn't know. I just want the public to understand.
We, we can actually get more of it private sale than what all, all the quotes were to trade it in.
So what's the timeframe look like? I mean, you said letter of intent. It's, obviously it's in. I know that this was approved as a purchase for the next fiscal year, which takes effect July one. So basically, we do a letter of intent. Obviously, the check doesn't get cut till July one. And then we take delivery at some point in July?
I can read the letter of intent if you want. Sure.
Katie, Katie drafted a letter of intent and Cash, Katie and I discussed the financial piece as to my preference of what we should be able to do rather than paying for the entire piece of equipment at once.
And this is in letter.
That's in the letter of intent.
All right. Let me read it so that we can. The town of Clarendon agrees to purchase the new Link Belt seventy five X three excavator for, from Contractor Sales Company Incorporated. Clarendon will split the purchase price with an initial down payment on or after July one, twenty twenty one of fifty grand, which includes sixteen hundred dollar additional two-year warranty for a total of a five-year warranty. The town agrees to pay the remaining balance of fifty one thousand four hundred seventy five on or after September fifteenth of twenty twenty one. The excavator price includes a hydraulic thumb, as was mentioned, hydraulic tilt, ditching bucket, digging bucket, blade, and steel tracks.
My reason for that, as far as the financial proposal, was that we don't collect taxes until mid-September through mid-October. So we would be putting out a down payment for that initial, but then even though we're in a new fiscal year, the monies have not yet come in per se, so that that would allow us for more steady financial picture for, for the town.
Have you seen a copy of this?
I have not.
No. Do you want to look it over again?
Uh, no, that sounds pretty straightforward.
And, and when it says on or after, we would be looking like our first check run after the first of July. And then that first check run mid-September.
Okay. And the first check run in July would be?
First check run in July would actually be July fifth.
Okay.
And in September, that would look like the thirteenth.
Okay. Yeah, I think that that would definitely work. I mean, it definitely works for us, and we're willing to work with the town. Absolutely. What I would say is that I think it's very wise to buy that extended warranty at the price that it is. I think that you're making a wise choice there. You know, if that was a CAT and you were trying to get an extended warranty, it would probably be more like three to five thousand. So this is, that's actually really good coverage. And then what I would say is, what we can do is, once we add the letter of intent, we can actually start ordering the attachments for the machine, start installing them, so that we're ready to go, you know, whenever the check is cut and we receive it. I can either come up and get it, or you guys can mail it.
Say, the, the check is cut, the first check?
Correct. Yes.
Yep. I just want people to understand.
Absolutely. Yep. And then all we would have to do is figure out how to get it from our store up here, whether you want to hire a truck or you want us to hire a truck.
That, that'll be thrown in.
Yes. Let's make a deal over there. Can, do we have a trailer that would?
We, we're able to haul it. Yes.
Just, you guys work all that out, but I just wanna.
Yeah.
If I could just add one thing in, this is Jeremy on the Zoom meeting.
Sure.
It's nice to see you tonight. So what we could do, I think what we would like to do, if that's gonna be the process you're gonna move forward with, we would probably want you to sign also a rental agreement and make sure the machine has insurance covered. So when you take that possession, after that first cut, check run, that the machine is covered with insurance and it will technically be covered on our end. And then when the final check is cut, it would be converted to a full sale.
I'll throw that over to the treasurer. Okay. Treasurer understands that and agrees.
That's understandable.
As long as the final dollar is the final dollar, how, how we get there is, it is what it is.
The first thing is the letter of intent, and then we can figure out any of the additionals as was mentioned. So lead that up to the folks in the office.
Where, so just to clarify, we obviously approved an expenditure in the next budget, capital expenditure. We are falling close to that, but my understanding is we are a little beyond that. What are we doing as far as the, is there enough highway fund balance to cover the balance, that difference?
So the game plan is, we initially had ninety thousand dollars budgeted in our capital expenditures line for a new excavator. Included in that ninety thousand was selling our old excavator for around twenty. Cash is gonna be certainly working with you folks to get and secure the best deal he can, hopefully maybe even more than that for that excavator. So that should pick up some of that shortfall if we're able to get there. And if not, then there is enough in the highway fund balance to support covering the remainder of that, that expenditure.
So we're covered. Town is covered.
No, I mean, we're not that far off. I know that. We're obviously, we're approving something that's beyond, just beyond what was.
Right. So you're satisfied with this letter of intent, as was read? And I, I would ask for a motion to go ahead and.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the letter of intent as read.
Signed by the.
Signed by the select board chair to enter into the purchase agreement for the new excavator.
There's second for discussion. All right. Is there any further discussion?
I guess my only question is, you're completely satisfied with what you're looking at?
Yep, I am. And we can actually, just for public knowledge, we can run off other figures on the other quotes I have. I don't know if we want to do that afterwards or now, it doesn't matter.
We can do that after, I think.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so there's been a motion made, seconded. We've had discussion before and after the motion. So all those favorite in motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Did I hear you say aye?
I didn't know if I was laughing.
I couldn't resist.
Katie, make a copy of that, so this gentleman doesn't have to sit here. And I know he likes the place, but meanwhile, I'll wait till Katie's back there.
Do you want to give just a brief update, Cash, about, just so it is on record where we were? I know you said this was the lowest bid, but where we were comparable wise?
I, I can list out the machines that I quoted out. One was a Kubota, which is the eighteen ton pound machine, K, KX oh eight oh. That come in a hundred thirteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars with a, if you subtract out the difference between the Link Belt, this was eleven thousand seven hundred fifty five, fifty five dollars difference. The other was a CAT three ten Caterpillar, and that came in at, they just had a three percent increase July first. That come in a hundred thirty three thousand, and the difference between the Link Belt and the CAT was thirty one thousand nine hundred ten. However, the CAT is a little bit heavier machine as far as weight and the weight class. The other thing I looked at too was availability. The Kubota and the CAT, you were lucky to get them by late fall. This one here happened to be ready available, and that wasn't planned. That just, the way it fell. Just happened.
So I guess the last question, I know you guys mentioned it, maybe I missed it, and I'm sorry if I did. You mentioned ordering attachments and all of that. What's the lead time right now, and what are you figuring on that?
Right now, our lead time is pretty good. We're about, it usually takes us about three to four days to get a thumb to put on.
Okay, so not bad.
You know, you're talking maybe a week to two weeks, two weeks just in case we have to wait for something, but usually we can put it together in about a week, week and a half.
Well, we still have that little piece of equipment.
Absolutely.
Right now, so.
Well, you know, I'm just thinking, July fifth's not that far away, you know?
It's like two, two weeks.
Yeah, it's really only two weeks away. So that's why I was just curious, you know, if it was gonna be a waiting game on the attachments type deal. So that's good enough.
So far, as far as we can see, and you know, we don't have a crystal ball or anything, everything's kind of changing in our industry, and right now, parts availability is really good, but you know, we're expecting some hurdle there in the future, as a lot of vendors are hitting right now, so. I think it's a great time for you guys to purchase this machine. I think it's gonna be great for your town. This size class, I think it's perfect for the road work, rush work.
Yeah.
Everything like that. So I think, I think this all kind of fell together pretty nicely in the end. And of course, I've been talking to Cash since I think January or February, so it's been a little while, and thank goodness we, we had one come in and we were able to make this happen.
Well, I certainly want to thank both of you for participating and being a part of tonight.
And just looking, looking forward, just a little warranty work would be done here on site, unless there's something excessively major.
Usually, yeah. What I would suggest is, usually for like the eighty size class and below, a lot of times, the dealer, whether it's CAT or Case or anybody, they'll require you to bring the machine to them, and then they'll fix it. So usually, there is a charge for travel time and mileage for a road tech to come up and do the repairs up here. But other than that, the parts are covered, the labor's covered. The only thing that you'd have to worry about is travel time and mileage. That being said, we haven't had a lot of issues with these machines, and Link Belt's very well known for their uptime.
Or availability.
Absolutely. And we have a lot of contractors that invest in them, a lot of quarries that invest in them, so it's a great product. The Link Belt Company's been around since the eighteen hundreds, was rebranded in nineteen ninety eight, and has been selling excavators ever since. And they've held up extremely well. We compare, we run into CAT as one of our competitors quite often, just because of the amount of power that our machines have, the reliability, the durability, and the comfort inside the CAT.
Cash is gonna want an air conditioner.
Absolutely.
All right, well, there's nothing else. I think we could.
Move on.
Yeah, move on.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
And thanks both these for, one guy showing up and the other guy kinda showing up.
Yeah, I kinda showed up, hey?
But you did make it here.
It's afraid I would ruin our chances, so I figured I would be with this remote.
All right. Thank you very much. We're gonna move on.
Thank you very much to everybody.
All right, thank you. Um, Cash, how about a report?
A report. We finished up on grading all the roads and stuff, tied me in, working on roadside mowing. We're ongoing with the ditch cleanings and stuff like that on Walker Mountain Road, where we're preparing to get ready for paving, walk amount for asphalt, cleaning the ditches and rocking, put rock in where needed on the slopes. And the normal everyday occurrence that happens from time to time. We've been dealing with different things of trees coming down or, or whatever, so.
Does anybody have anything, any questions of the road commissioner?
Cash, up on Middle Road, I know you've probably seen it, right at the north edge of the bridge on Scott Brook, there's a pretty good pothole heading north.
Yep.
Right in the right-hand wheel track.
A shallow one, yep.
Yeah, it's getting deeper.
Is it getting deeper?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's about the way pothole handle it's really bad, other than a couple of Walker Mountain where we're gonna pave it.
Yeah, yeah.
When is that, any contemplation?
We have, we're just, Katie can figure out on that about the grants and stuff?
Yeah, so we had submitted three paving grants and one structure grant, and so far, we've gotten emails that we are recommended for approval for the paving on Walker Mountain Road, and then for a structure on Creek Road. So still waiting, like, for an actual email beyond recommended for approval, but.
The structure on Creek Road, is that the Hawkins Bridge?
That's the Hawkins Bridge. Narrow one there.
Good.
Um, any other questions? All right, let's talk about downed power lines, trees. What do you got there?
There's a comment I want to make. I put that in there for the agenda tonight. We had a tree go down about two weeks ago. And this is basically for safety precaution for anybody that's using the road that either lives in town, town or traveling town. We had an individual, young fellow, thought he was really helping out that night when a tree went down. And he actually got out and cut the tree up, and it was laying on a power line. So I just want to put it out there to, you know, the public to, don't do it.
Where, what was the location?
It was actually on Creek Road. Yeah.
Obviously, didn't get, didn't get bit by it, I assume.
No, actually, had kicked the breaker up the line enough to, so it, it wasn't energized. But you never know if they're energized or not.
That's exactly.
So I just wanted to.
Especially some of that line there, it's got tree wire, they call it.
Right.
It's got a real big black insulation on it, so it'll lay on the ground, unless there's a nick somewhere.
Right.
Then it'll knock the line out.
Right.
Well, if you.
So that, just a comment of safety there for whoever sees a tree down, approach it with caution and not approach it at all, you know.
All the road crew. All right, let's talk about this Public Works mutual aid agreement. When we, just a brief history, when we had this discussion before, we were given some brief information, and it didn't seem like the select board at that time wanted to get involved with this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we do not enter into a Public Works mutual aid agreement.
And I will second.
Okay. Let's have some discussion.
Okay, um, so Stephanie, we had our hazard mitigation plan meeting last week. Stephanie heads that up. She kind of wanted to include in the plan that we do have one, and we had decided not to in the past. So she asked us, like, why aren't we wanting to be a part of the agreement? So we explained, like, you know, we feel that if a neighboring town needs a piece of equipment, we would gladly help them out, but we don't need to be in an agreement to do that. She explained that it's similar to like a firefighter's mutual aid agreement, that you can respond when someone needs help, but you can also decline. And there's a benefit to being in the agreement if there is a FEMA disaster and a town uses our equipment, we'd be eligible for reimbursement. So that's the benefit of being a part of it. So she just wanted us to reconsider, but.
Chairman, I maintain my motion.
I still agree with Robert.
Is there any further discussion? Cash, do you have any input on this?
No, I, Katie explained it very well of what we were informed about.
What has been, since you've been on as a road commissioner, have you helped other towns or vice versa? Have other towns?
We have, actually, we've had the town of Wallingford grade for us one time.
Yeah.
But it wasn't a natural disaster or anything like that.
Yeah.
It was just a straight up.
Well, some mutual agreement.
Well, it's not a really agreement. It's, you know, you help each other out once in a while, or if needed, like that.
Right, there's a motion made, seconded. Is there any further conversations? All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
So at this point, it's three to one. Moving right along. Okay, speak to us about a temporary flagger position.
We actually reached out to try to hire flaggers, some of the businesses, and they are so busy that we can't get flaggers. The closest I found was three weeks out, and I kind of like to have at least one person flagging along with myself or one of the crew members as an extra help. We have a corner on Walker Mountain Road that really bothers me a lot, and that's by Lumis' sales and service there.
Should have two.
There was a, there'll be two flaggers, and like I said, I'm able to work the crew. I've been flagging a lot myself. And keeping an eye on the crew there, you know, helping them when I can, but on that corner, I'd like to have two flaggers, myself and somebody else, or one of my crew members or somebody else. Had a fellow lined up, actually talked to him this afternoon, and he's kind of bailed out on me of interest now.
Is there, is there a, if we hire someone, do they have to be trained?
They gotta be certified. That course, I believe, what, Katie, four-hour course online?
Yeah, I'm checking with our insurance, because I thought there was an online four-hour course, and I emailed him, and he wasn't aware of it, but he was gonna check with someone else. So they're able to be trained one way or another.
Hey, I think at this, at this point in time, would it be wise for the select board, so that we not keep throwing this out there to say, once we get that information back, then we'll go ahead and see if we can't post it around town or something. Would that work?
I was thinking you two are retired.
That's what I was saying too, but. I would take that day off. The other thing is, I approached the fire department thinking that with all the downed power lines and stuff like that, and the car access, that they would be certified. Apparently, they're not certified.
No. We had that same issue at CV when I worked there. Sometimes, like, along one oh three and down and towards Chester, we used to help the flaggers.
Right.
But we weren't qualified, so it was advised to our safety department at the time that if something happens, people could sue you.
I mean, I don't know if we need a motion. I think that the agreement of the board, as long as we all are in agreement, I think you get more information and.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think it's within Cash's purview to bring on somebody as needed to do that. I don't think we necessarily need to do anything.
So I think the reason that Cash was bringing it before the board is because it would literally not be subcontracting out. You would literally be bringing someone on payroll.
But part-time.
Part.
Yeah, and actually.
Very part-time.
Not even part-time. It would be a temporary.
Just a temporary. I mean, I could use somebody for like three days.
So if we need that as a motion, I guess I could make a motion that Cash be authorized to bring on a temporary employee flagger.
Who's trained.
Who is trained.
Or certified.
Or certified, whatever it's gotta be. Do you want to put a not to exceed three days a week?
No, as needed.
As needed.
No, not, I think we should leave it as Cash needs it.
As, as Cash, at Cash's discretion.
Right.
For the summer, let's just set this for.
While the construction season.
Construction, for construction season of twenty twenty one, and what's it going rate for a flagger? I probably don't, I don't want to know.
I think that's why I added an executive session, so you guys can talk about that, the pay rate.
It really has to be. I mean, flagging rates are what flagging rates are. I mean, it's, is it twenty bucks an hour? Is it eighteen bucks an hour? Is it?
Quite expensive. I don't really know.
Well, we're not looking for a professional person. We're looking for someone who wants to earn an extra buck, so we'll set a pay limit.
For what we want?
For what we want. And if that person spends the four hours, you know, we'll pay for his learning, whatever it was to get certified, and then.
The average salary for a flagger in the state of Vermont is sixteen dollars and seventy cents.
Seventeen bucks an hour.
I was gonna say, so it's seventeen bucks.
Yeah.
So I'll, so I'll authorize in my motion then, to finish my motion out, at seventeen dollars an hour.
You ready to want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Katie, when you get a chance, read back the motion.
It's a long one.
Yes.
So Selectman Conan motioned to authorize that Cash hired. So, Selectman Conan motioned to authorize that Cash hired temporary employee as a flagger for the twenty twenty-one construction season. For seventeen dollars an hour.
Certified. Temporary.
Certified temporary.
Are we gonna do, like, we, we can hi- or like train someone like with our, through our insurance, or they should already come certified?
I don't ca- I mean, as far as I, as long as they are.
Tied up too much, we won't get anybody.
Correct, I, I'm saying as long as they're certified when you put them out on the road.
Right.
How they get there is totally between you and whoever it is.
They.
That's my opinion.
Yeah, so if we have to pay somebody four hours to train this person, that's a sacrifice, but.
Yeah.
Long term, it would be better for the town. Alright.
Seems reasonable to me.
Alright, the motion been made, seconded, we've had brief discussion.
Just as a quick thought here, maybe uh, and just looking ahead more than anything, and I don't wanna make a part of the motion or anything. But it might be useful in the coming years if we got somebody that we know we can get a hold of.
Right.
Local roads also sent out an email at the end of May. Saying that they completed an e-learning version of the Workzone Flagger Course that Katie was talking about earlier. Um, that enables any municipal employee to complete the course in their online management system and receive their flagger certification card.
Yeah.
So that would be covered under that, I believe.
Well, I assume what you're saying, if um, and we all know what happens when we assume. Um, that this person could come into the town. And could be not police, but you know, you could sit down with this person and get on the computer. And.
I could set them up with a laptop.
Right. So then we know that that person has.
Right.
Oh yeah, they would do it here, I would think.
That sounds good. So there's been a motion made, seconded, we've had a brief discussion. Is there any further discussion?
There's one thing I, just a comment. For the responsibility of flaggers, not just here or any, anywheres. The flagger is responsible for the personnel crew, the equipment in the road, and the people that are driving on the road. And I can't believe with the responsibility they have, that's all they get paid.
Yeah.
Going rate, if it, if you don't find anybody. Revisit it.
If I've been out there on the road, flagging and stuff, I'm like, wow, you know, that's a wicked responsibility, like the three things I just named off.
Your situation, when you have like Walker Mountain, people fly down that road. And um, I hear that, you know, it's just rumors, but I would uh, I would personally. Think you'd be better off, the crew would be better off if you had two guys there, so if you have one crew member that's established already, and then.
We all have our flagger certification.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, but what I'm saying though is, and then have this extra person, you have more control over traffic.
Exactly, yeah.
So that's like, you know, I've seen that when we did line work, so. Alright, motion made, seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Anyone opposed?
Just one little addition to your last statement of flying down Walker Mountain, they fly everywhere in town.
Oh, I know. Not me though.
No, I guess not.
Wait Cash?
Sorry.
Alright. Uh. Approval of the select board warrants, they're floating and drifting.
I have not had them yet, so at some point they can come back this way.
I guess I'm more set, that's okay, I'll catch them later.
Okay.
Um, any public comments? Any public, let me rephrase that. Uh, old business, there isn't any. New business. Uh, FY twenty-two grants and aid letter of intent.
So, um, this is due in by June twenty-fifth, and it's claiming our grants and aid money for next year's projects. So this year, I think we have about fourteen thousand, is it, or seventeen thousand that we're gonna be using on East Street?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, um, and then for our next year's, well, FY twenty-two, um, we have about fourteen thousand again.
Alright, so this is a letter of intent to participate in municipal board grant and aid program. Um, that's what I'm assuming it says, Katie?
Yes.
And it, uh, one duly authorized representative has to sign it, so I'd ask for a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to have the chair sign it.
And I'll second it.
Any further comments or questions or considerations? Hearing done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We have a fireworks request.
Okay, fireworks request for Sherry and John Sylvester. On the twenty-fourth or the twenty-eighth, depending on, I assume, weather. For one hour or less, they are over on Airport Road. And they have agreed to the one hour less, no lanterns. And of course, all the other rules that we have. And they have agreed to no fireworks after ten PM.
Lady was very accommodating, she just wants to do it for like ten or fifteen minutes with her grandkids on one of those days.
Oh, probably more spark.
Maybe.
Um, alright, is there a motion?
Being that everything is in order, I'll make a motion to approve, and let the chairman sign on behalf of the board.
Second that.
I think one thing we wanna think about, uh, I'm assuming they're doing this at the house.
Yeah, I always ask the location that they're shooting them off.
Yeah, the location, they're kinda back in the woods there pretty good. It's back, it's actually off from Airport Road, it's uh, well up there where my son used to live.
Yep.
That's where it is.
Big speed drive?
Yeah. You know, it's.
Yeah.
Having it been dry like it has been, we've had some rain, maybe we'll get more and it not be an issue.
We're gonna pass this along to uh.
Clayton.
Clayton. Yeah.
They'll be aware.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, there's a motion made, seconded, we've had brief discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Um, and just so you know, I have three permits for the next meeting for July fourth, so I'm waiting for all the permits for July fourth for the. Um, last meeting in June.
Alright, uniform policy personnel recommendations.
So, uh, Heidi. Cash and I went through the personnel policy and went through the LCT's recommendations. So I've created like a guide to walk you through, uh, proposed changes. Um, and that correlates with the, uh, personnel policy. And then a couple of attachments to refer to, um, as we walk through it, so. I don't know if you want me to just walk through the changes?
Just the, just the changes, the additions.
Um, so I guess starting on the first page, page one of the policy. Um, right on our section two, persons covered, we need to add in, in between administration and persons covered. Um, the equal employment opportunity section. Um, and V L C T has a sample, and I included that as one of the attachments. So if you all agree on that.
Let's keep going down through them, and if someone doesn't agree.
Okay.
Then we'll have a discussion on it.
Okay, so, um, page one, the last paragraph. At the option of the select board, full-time and or part-time positions may be posted and advertised, um, in a local newspaper stating position, title. Salary, um, deadline. We just, we had decided, me and Heidi thought it was a good idea just to delete the end of that. And instead say at the option of the select board, full-time and or part-time positions may be posted and advertised as deemed appropriate based on the needs of the town.
Have any questions or concerns on it?
So page two, um, the first paragraph, uh, last sentence. Um, right at the end, um, it's talking about. Um, education, experience, aptitude, knowledge, skills, um, all the qualifications deemed necessary for performance. Uh, the duties of the position to be filled shall be considered weights assigned to each factor as may be deemed proper by the select board. Or such advisory examining committee as may be appointed. Um, Heidi and I propose that you take that out and just say, um. Deemed appropriate by the select board, instead of an examining committee as well.
Yeah. Any, how many questions on that?
So page two, under, um, number three, part-time, it's like right towards the end of the page. Um, the last sentence talks about these employees are not eligible to participate in town benefit programs, but will accrue sick time. If work, if worked is at least eighteen hours a week on average. Um, V L C T recommends that you just add based on fifty-two weeks per year, just so that's cleared up. Then on the last paragraph of that page, last sentence. Um, these employers are not eligible to participate in town benefit programs, but will accrue sick time if, um, more than twenty weeks. Per year I worked and the individual works at least an average of eighteen hours. Um, and I just added based on fifty-two weeks again.
Anybody have any problems with?
Um. Yeah, that was just like a grammatical thing.
Yep.
Um. Page three, under, uh, probationary period, first sentence. V L C T recommends, um, that all new hires should have a hundred eighty day probationary period instead of ninety. So that's kind of up to you guys, it's three months versus six months.
We had that discussion, if you remember you.
Yeah, we've had this before.
And uh, we thought that that hundred and eighty days was a little bit much.
Yeah.
That's why we kept it at ninety.
Yeah, I would stick with the ninety.
Yeah.
Hundred and eighty is a bit excessive.
Yeah.
You're gonna know within ninety days if somebody's not cutting.
Right. Right.
Okay, well, I can mark that. So page three, under that probationary period, the fifth sentence. Um, it talks about how new employees shall be paid at a probationary rate during this period. Um, there is a question how you would, uh, do salaried employees.
Well, it's pertaining to salaried employees, right?
Yeah.
They're all salary, right?
It is very specific to say, you're, when you hire a member of the road crew, they're gonna start at this rate. And after their probationary rate, the select board is going to evaluate and see if maybe they deserve a raise or something like that after their probationary rate. Um, so the question then became, okay, is there a probationary rate per se for salaried employees? Um, the only salaried employee we have currently is the position of the select board's administrative assistant. Um, I, unless you start talking about the elected officials as well. So.
I should say, we're not going down that road. Gonna open up a can of worms.
I'm gonna pass, and I'm sure you guys are familiar with this discussion, is where we wanted to. After you did your probationary period, we wanted to have everybody have the same rate of pay. But then, we jumped into, well, this guy has all the benefits and this guy doesn't, and all this kinda stuff, so I don't know that we even really wanna.
So that's where the salaried employees question came from.
Why can't you just say, cause the only salaried employee is the administrative assistant?
Yeah.
Why can't you just put in there, the administrative assistant will be at the discretion of the select board?
Yeah.
And just end it, because there's only, there's, there's only one. And she's never allowed to leave, so.
How does Gloria pay Annie?
That's at her discretion.
That's her discretion within her budget.
I was gonna say, like, same thing with Heidi.
She's not salaried, she's hourly.
Okay.
It's a little easier to, it, a probationary period is easy enough to do with an hourly employee.
Okay.
But it's when the salaried positions are talked about that.
See, I would just, yeah, just add salaried employees will be at the discretion of the select board.
Alright.
End of story.
On that next one down, um, I should've just crossed it off, cause that had already been taken care of and updated, so I'm gonna skip to page. Three, under physical examination. Um, last sentence, that was just kind of, uh, I don't know, in this. Version, it says that the medical exam shall remain confidential and shall not be placed in the employee's personnel file, but in a separate medical file. We don't have that, a separate medical file. Me and Heidi just suggested putting it in the employee's confidential personnel file.
Sense to make.
Yep.
Okay, so page four, under promotions. Um, this paragraph is about, um, if the road commissioner is out for the day, someone. The next senior employee will get his pay, um, and we suggested taking this completely out.
So they wouldn't get paid for taking responsibility? I don't see that happening.
So it's been our experience, and Cash can jump in on this, that when Cash has not been here, he is still directing the crew what to do from afar. So even though Cash is still directing them from afar, you're then having one employee getting the benefit of his pay, even though Cash is still telling them what to do.
He's telling them what to do.
Suggesting what to do.
Right, would, but then the responsibility of the senior member of the crew. If there's all of a sudden something where Cash can't re- he can't report to Cash. Then he has a responsibility, and I think that he should be paid, it's the union thing. I think that he should be paid for the responsibility.
Grab ahold, grab ahold of your seat, because. Even though I one hundred percent agree that this never should've been in there, unfortunately, the precedent's been set and it can't go anywhere.
Okay.
There you go.
Thanks.
I don't agree with it, I've never agreed with it.
I buy your root beer.
But unfortunately, unfortunately, it's there and it's been there, and it's very hard to take benefits away as we have discussed.
Yeah.
Over and over again.
Yep.
Unfortunately, it's one of the ones that. It's there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, see, let's leave that.
As much as I agree, I do, I do. But.
Moving right along.
Okay, so, um, page four, under discipline and discharge. Um, second sentence, reasons for discipline or dismissal may include, and then there's, um. A list of, um, reasons. One of them that wasn't listed is not meeting performance expectations.
Absolutely.
So we added that in.
Yeah, sounds good.
Um, page five, second paragraph. Um. This is talking about suspension without pay, and V L C T recommends the wording be, um, suspension with or without pay.
Pretty straightforward.
Yep.
Um, okay, so page five, third paragraph. Um, sent, second sentence, it says the chairman of the select board shall conduct a pre-termination hearing. We change this, or we suggest changing it to just the select board, the whole board.
Yeah.
There should always be more than one person.
That's not, I, I totally agree.
Page five, under oral and written reprimands. Um, that's just a grammar thing, it says, um, she, he, and then his, her, so we just changed them so they match. That's just a grammar thing, it says she, he, and then his, her, so we just changed them so they match. And then adding a period to the end of the sentence there, at the end of the paragraph. All right, and then if you flip to page seven. Under general obligations. I think it's the, yeah, last sentence, it says that private use of town property or equipment seriously discouraged and shall be approved only in emergency situations. Determined by the select board or authorized representative.
That should just be the select board.
Select board, yeah. That's what we changed it to.
Cause in the past, one or the other of the members used to sit up ahead because they couldn't get a hold of maybe the chair or something like this. This is before I became one of the chair, and this happened a couple times, I think. Remember, Bob, we had a little. That issue, and we'll leave it at that.
If you flip over to page eight, this is talking about contracts and like the bidding process. So the first sentence, no elective or appointive officer, we switched that grammar thing, no appointed or elected officer. Shall be beneficially interested. So after that first sentence, we suggested taking out the rest. And then just referring it to the purchasing policy that we have in place, rather than trying to explain it in this policy. Which, I have the purchasing policy right here, but that's also another policy that needs to be.
So basically, in parentheses, it'll say, please see purchasing policy.
Right, because right now, what, what is listed there doesn't even match up with your purchasing policy, so you have two conflicting things.
That makes sense to me.
So if you flip to page nine. Before hospitalization, medical and dental insurance, VLCT, they have a model. Employment harassment and discrimination and sexual harassment policy, or like sections that need to be inserted. Which, those are attachments I have for you. So that first paragraph on page nine, under hospitalization. It talks about upon completion of the probationary period. Then regular full-time, regular part-time employees will be eligible to get town benefits. And VLCT recommends that you offer them upon hire, like health insurance, dental.
Which we do.
Which we've been doing already.
So it's just bringing it in line.
So then skipping to page twelve. Under processing the leave request. I've just updated my phone number as administrative assistant. And then, under holidays on page twelve, it's been suggested that we add Martin Luther King Junior Day as a holiday.
I agree.
Everyone good with that?
I agree with that.
Page thirteen, under personal days. If you look at the third through six paragraphs under personal days, it's talking about holidays. So just suggests switching it.
Move it over, so it's all.
To under holidays.
When we're reviewing, we don't miss something.
And then, the last sentence on page thirteen that goes into page fourteen, vacation will begin to accrue one year from employee hire date. We've added given in a lump sum at the beginning of the calendar year, just to be clear.
I don't know if I would word it lump sum. Lump sum sounds like you're handing them money. You just say given in total, or given in, like, the fact that.
Allocated.
Yeah, allocated in total, cause, cause if you say lump sum, it makes you sound like you're cutting them a check.
So, do you have better wording? Or do you want me to come up?
Like, in total, or given.
Or allocation.
Or allocated to their bank, or. Yeah, yeah. You just can't, like I say.
Page fourteen, under military leave. There's not much there, so I was just gonna pretty much copy and paste the VLCT's model, which is an updated military leave.
Yep.
Section. Okay, so page fifteen, the first paragraph is talking about snow day pay. And. So the road crew members must report to the road commissioner if they're unavailable, and that's it in the policy. So we recommended adding on, if road crew members unavailable for on-call duties during the aforementioned period. They will not receive snow day pay for that day, or days. So meaning if they're out of town, they're actually not available, they won't receive.
Yeah, we were, we were gonna change that last year.
I was gonna say, that's been two years we've been talking about that one.
We wanna make, but on the other hand, you've already set preference with it.
Yeah, this is different.
But this is, you can change policy, so.
I mean, I totally agree with it.
That's a policy that the guys actually said, oh, yeah, that, that doesn't make sense.
Tried to pull Robert's chain.
Maybe I'm choosing, choosing my battles.
Then, in the policy here, we have the, the normal reporting hours are seven AM to three PM. And right now, they're six AM to two PM, so do we wanna make that an official change, or?
You could put, or as adjusted by the road commissioner. Because you're the one that initiated that in the first place. So I think that we should have that in writing. There may be a time. You know, like a storm like Irene comes along or something like this, and you wanna change the work times. As long as it's an eight-hour stretch, so that they know that, you know, they can get time and a half or double time, whatever.
Heidi, do you have anything to add in that section, or? So, do you want me to switch in the policy, it's six AM to two PM, unless otherwise specified?
Right.
Yeah, I think just a clause at the end that says unless otherwise specified by the road commissioner.
That way, there's no arguments.
Under A, pay and benefit package, I'll add a B, and then I'll change all the formatting. This is where your uniform section would go in.
Let's come back to that, in my opinion, cause that's gonna probably be our longest discussion. So why don't we finish this and come back and then add that? I think the next one's pretty straightforward, cause we stuck with ninety before, I think we gotta stick with ninety here, so we're not gonna change that.
Page sixteen, that was just another grammar thing. I added the correct name, heroin, drug, and alcohol policy for CMV operators. It's in that second paragraph. And then VLCT recommends any new hires get a copy of that manual, not just have it available at the town office. Page sixteen, fourth paragraph, that's a grammar thing. Adding department head or select board. And then the attachments at the end of the policy. VLCT recommends that job descriptions stand alone, rather than being a part of a personnel policy. So.
That makes sense.
Do you want me to, well, after we talk about the uniform policy, change all of it, edit it? And then give you guys the copy, like, at the next meeting?
Yeah, cause we have time, so I think before July one. I think we do a clean copy for next meeting after we make our decisions and we formally approve it, so that it's ready for July first. It's my opinion.
That opinion.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree with it.
So going back to uniforms. I added in there Art Menard's suggestion, me and Heidi reviewed it, and then the other one is Heidi and I's recommendation based on Arts. Cause he had a lot of good ideas.
So I think the major, in my mind, the major discussion we have to have is it's been proposed to us. To have a policy that either has a percentage reimbursement or not, percentage reimbursement. In other words, a full reimbursement, that's the biggest rub, I think, right now. I think we all were in agreement already that it would be split into two payments in, during the year. At the halfway mark, I think everybody agreed with that. So the question becomes, do you set a percentage reimbursement as Art is suggesting? Or is it just reimbursement?
How would that work?
Well, what he's proposing, I think, based on the way I read it, is that they go out, they buy their stuff. They turn in their receipt, and they get eighty percent of what, his proposal is eighty percent, I think. Eighty, eighty percent of what you're gonna pay.
Goes out, according, with Arts' recommendation, if an employee goes out, spends one hundred dollars on work gear that meets their criteria. For what is allowable to be reimbursed, they would only receive eighty dollars reimbursement instead of the full one hundred. And they would have to assume the cost of that other remaining twenty dollars. Up until their, so they would continue to do this until they hit their total dollar amount. I, I understand the thought behind it, but I do, my personal opinion on this. Is that at any place of employment that I've, I've worked for, and having worked in accounts payable and having dealt with this. I've never seen any sort of split like that. The employee typically gets reimbursed for specific items that are set, like an approved specific item. And then, once they hit their max, that's it, they're done. So that would be my personal recommendation, instead of adding another thing to track. And then also, you're already taking away a benefit from the gentleman down there, where they're used to getting uniforms. One in particular who really uses that benefit, and you're already cutting that drastically, so you're, you're really gonna. Then also say, well, you're not getting uniforms anymore, and we're only gonna reimburse you eighty percent of what you spend on your clothes. Up until you hit your max, I, I just think that's a little rough.
We used to have work, CV. We buy from. Folks that manufactured it, come, used to come through with a CVPS logo on it. If you didn't buy that, then you didn't get anything. So, I have stuff up there that I only wore maybe once in my closet. And in fact, I gotta see if it fits, but anyway. The, but, but my point is, for the town here, I think it's, it's just, I like this. How did you frame that X amount for every month, or every other month, or twice a year?
Yeah, the twice, I, I absolutely agree, agree with doing twice a year, I know that. It, it's pretty common to either do twice a year or quarterly. If you, if you decide to, so for instance, Casella, I know, does a boot allowance, and they would do it quarterly. But they would take the amount that you're giving them, and like, they would split that to make it a quarterly thing.
And that money's guaranteed, whether you buy equipment or not, right?
Well, so you would have to purchase something that fits into what this says. So for instance, they would have to purchase work boots, work pants, shirts, coats, hats, or gloves. That's what's currently listed as being acceptable. If they bought something that didn't fall into those categories, then they wouldn't get reimbursed for it. But that would be made very clear.
But if you're getting paid quarterly, and something costs, a pair of boots costs two hundred fifty dollars, and you're only getting two hundred dollars quarterly. Then you're responsible for the other fifty, or do, when the next quarterly payment comes?
Well, I think we're also talking about doing it semi-annually, right?
I would say semi-annually.
We're talking about it, doing it twice.
Twice a year. So, so basically, if you bought something, cause it is gonna be two hundred and fifty.
It is gonna be two hundred and fifty.
So, if they bought something that was three hundred dollars, they get a check for two fifty, and then they're eligible for the next time around to. You know, so they're gonna, in that sense, it's not like, I don't know what Red Wings are now, but I mean, they were pricey boots.
Mine were like two hundred and forty bucks.
Yeah, so, you know, the reality is that you're gonna get reimbursed. And depending on what you buy. You may not get reimbursed for the whole amount, cause you're only eligible up to two fifty.
And, and just, and for the public, you can see this in the town report too. Uniforms, we were spending over five thousand dollars a year on these uniforms for the employees. So, this is not like, this is something new that we're spending money on, we're actually at a cost savings. I'm doing this for the town, and, and we, I mean, we have employees who prefer not to take advantage of the uniforms, form service that has been provided to them. So, we're, we're doing this as, as a cost savings to the taxpayer, in reality. While still trying to take care of the employee.
You work down there, what are you, what are you suggesting?
I suggest what we proposed before, the two payments a year, hundred percent. And relate back to what Heidi just mentioned, there's three employees that use the uniforms. And we're looking at five thousand dollars, that's, what, seventeen hundred dollars apiece? You know, that's quite a bit.
So, just for example, if you said, okay, June, the end of June, you get two hundred fifty dollars, and the end of December, you get two hundred fifty dollars. Whether you buy something or not?
No, no. No, they gotta bring in the receipt.
You gotta bring a receipt in, have to have a receipt for work clothes.
Reimbursable.
Reimbursable. If you spend the three hundred dollars, I think one of Mike's question was, maybe we ought to clarify this. If I spent three hundred dollars, you'll give me two hundred and fifty, that other fifty dollars, does that go towards the second payment? I'm just relating back to Mike to clarify it, I think you were on that track.
I mean, so, I, I'm gonna, as part of my process, I'm gonna be taking a look and, and looking at the receipts, I guess, to make sure that. If, if you're getting two hundred and fifty dollars a quarter, and their boots were three hundred. And so we only reimburse for two hundred and fifty, I suppose they could submit the receipt again in January for the remaining fifty dollars.
Yeah, that, that's for, just to clarify.
But they would have to wait that six months, until they would get that fifty dollars, so by then, they're probably gonna need to spend it on something else, is my guess.
But at least they know they're getting it, so that's what Mike's concerned with.
I just wanted to clarify that, what Mike was trying to get to, does that carry over through, that, it really doesn't matter to me, whatever it is, but.
I mean, we're, we're gonna be auditing the receipts to make sure that they're gonna reimburse for the things that they can be, so.
So basically, yeah, if you spent three hundred for a pair of boots, and you had fifty left.
Pay you out of pocket.
To pay out of pocket, that's probably, it doesn't matter if it's gonna be credited at the end of the year anyways, if you use it all up. It doesn't matter, so you might as well carry it, it doesn't matter.
Don't I know that?
It won't matter.
I mean, the reality is, the, the big thing is, is we've, we've definitely agreed, however you do it, you're only eligible for two hundred and fifty half a year. Semi-annual.
I mean, Kate, like I said, Katie and I went through Arts' recommendations, and, and it was very valuable to use as a jumping point for us. Do you, I mean, do you want me to go through what was changed? Or what we recommended as a change through here, like what the differences between? Like what the differences between the two are? There's not a lot of differences.
I don't think we need.
One is more confusing than the other, so I think keep it simple. And you, twice a year, you get a payment for clothing of two hundred fifty dollars.
I mean, like, one example, uh, when I say that we didn't change a lot, one, or that what was changed was very miniscule, was for instance, um, in, in his policy, he recommended saying, uh, like it would not be carrying over to the next year. We just added it would not carry to the next fiscal year, since we run on a fiscal year. Like there are little changes like that. But, um, a thank you for him to, taking the time to put something together so that we could use it as a springboard for this, instead of ha- us having to recreate the wheel.
What's the board? What do you guys think? Two payment of two fifty.
Well.
Upon receipt.
Yeah, it's gotta be receipt, uh, and I don't think there's much issue of what they're gonna spend. You go buy, it's been said right here, you go buy a decent pair of boots and you're spending some pretty good bucks.
Yeah.
No getting around it. Yeah, I have no problem with the figure of two fifty twice a year. Uh, as far as the eighty percent thing, as far as I'm concerned, let's forget that totally. That's all the picture, in my opinion. But, uh, I'd do it twice a year, July first, January first, or closest to it as you can come. And, uh, do it that way.
Yeah, well.
Because they're, they're gonna, they're gonna spend, they're gonna spend the two fifty in six months on clothes, one way or another down there, that's for sure. No getting around it, uh, even though we did say we'd get them some coveralls, it's still gonna be hard on clothes, a lot of it.
Is that still part of this decision? We're gonna get coveralls?
That's what I was just discussing.
Yeah.
And the town's responsible for that.
Right.
Right. That's on us.
That's basically for inside the shop, doing oil changes and stuff like that.
Well, you know, one, one question on that, probably I shouldn't even ask it, but I will. They're gonna get dirty. Hopefully, they're not gonna get tore up too bad, but they're gonna get dirty. They're gonna have to be laundered. You can't ask these guys to wear the same thing four, five, six times, grease all over them, this and that. How are we gonna handle that to ship them out to laundry or?
That's their responsibility.
Maybe have Katie use her watch.
She's talking about, he's talking about the coveralls when they get.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's their responsibility.
Well, the thing is, we're providing them. The coveralls, we used to use, we used to do the swamp work and all that kind of stuff. You know, we were going through the swamps and stuff. Um, I, we always took them home. We didn't have people come and pick them up. I don't know what they did in the garage. You'd have to ask Eddie Baker, but on the outside, you know, we, when it got so bad where you couldn't stand within five feet of each other, somebody suggested bring it home and wash it.
I don't think we worry about that bridge till we have to cross it.
Okay, so to sum up this conversation, then we're looking at a, uh, two hundred fifty dollar every six month budget on this. That's what you're proposing, Heidi?
I think that's what's budgeted per employee.
Two hundred fifty dollars, probably six months, yeah.
Yeah. So we can put that right into the policy. All right. Is there anything else we have to cover relative to policy?
You agree on like a hundred percent, right, or something?
Basically, it sounds to me like the consensus is we're going with yours.
So that's all I have for the policy part, um.
You two guys did a good job.
Thanks.
Good from Cass, right? Did you crack the whip on all this?
Um, I think just as back burner things, um, Heidi and I will probably be working on the purchasing policy. And the smoking policy needs to be updated. Um, but other pressing things will get done first. If that's something you guys want done.
It should be. Make sure they're all up to date, in my opinion.
Okay, that's all I have for that part then.
All right. Heidi, do you have any thing you wanna bring up other than what we just discussed?
Um, just that we're coming up until our fiscal year end. Um, we are looking pretty good. We were able to secure a lot of grants this past year, so where we're, uh, we seem to be right on track. We're actually, uh, we haven't spent as much as we thought we were going to. Uh, we budgeted to reduce our fund balance by a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and currently we're, uh, we have reduced our fund balance for just about fifty. So we still have some invoices that we're waiting to come in. Um, but we're doing pretty good. I will, um, provide those, uh, budget statuses for you, uh, for the next meeting.
Katie, do you have anything?
Um, I have just been getting some complaints, um, about cemetery mowing um, and some possible damage that's been being done. I've sent you guys the pictures. I don't know what direction you want me to take further than what I've done.
Have you had a conversation with the mow company at all? Yep.
I emailed them.
About it?
Yeah.
Did you get any response?
Um, I just, I, so I texted the billing lady and said I had sent an email if she could pass it along to that guy.
So what my, how long ago was that?
Last week.
Let's see if we get a response before our next meeting.
Follow-up.
But let's see if we get a follow-up and.
As it gets close to the next meeting.
If we need, yeah, if we don't get something back, I think we need to obviously have a conversation in further, greater depth. I mean, I, I agree, the pictures that I saw, is all of it new? I don't know. Uh, we did a lot of work in that West Clarendon Cemetery, and I'll tell you that a lot of those stones were nicked and, I mean, they, they're just, that's a very, very old cemetery. Um, but I think I'd like to give them a chance to respond, and right now, I'm sure they're out straight, so that's probably why we haven't heard anything back.
Yeah, I sent the email last week, um, and then that weekend, um, he was texting me about other damage in the cemeteries, like, you know, animals getting.
Was that the one where there was a tree?
Yeah.
You, there was a tree down?
Yeah, so it seemed like he was a little bit more aware of what he should be doing, so.
Okay. I, I mean, let's see, I, that's the other thing. I would say you made them aware. So let's give it an opportunity and make sure that there's not more. If more damage appears in the next two weeks, we need to have a conversation. But if we've made aware and that's all that really needs to happen, and it's gonna be better now, let's move on with our lives. I don't think we need to take action and make a huge deal right now.
Yeah.
Cuz, cuz we have made them aware.
The problem I find is that over the past few years, we've had so many different people in the mowing. You know, and we're now paying attention to something that could have been established six years ago.
You could, I mean, that marble, if you chip off a white piece, it's gonna take it.
Yeah.
A little while.
It's gonna take it a while before it decolors down. And, and I mean, we're talking, you're talking those old stones in the old section of West Clarendon, for example. We, we reset quite a few of those when the kids did community service in there.
Yeah.
And I will tell you, they scratch and they chip like nothing. They're, I mean, they're, they're very, they're, they're decomposing. So they're, they're breaking down. That's why you can't even read the names on them anymore because they're, they're that old. So when you're talking Revolutionary War era stones, it's getting rough.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, even, um, when you're, remember, we didn't want them cutting grass with a machine so close. So you wanted you to use a trimmer. Well, the trimmers do more damage.
Trimmers do damage on those soft stones too. Yep, they do.
Well, I'm thinking that is part of the contract that they're not supposed to use a mower within six inches.
Yeah.
So I'm sure they're doing a lot of weed whacking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could be causing the damage, but.
Um.
So as long as we are bringing it to their attention, hopefully they'll come back and acknowledge the fact that, well, we're trying to be careful, a little something.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's, let's have it on our next agenda and just have a further, let's check in at that point, in my opinion.
Yeah, prior to the next meeting, one way or the other. Um, Cass, do you have any concerns?
Nope.
I have all set.
No, just a little statement. I got a word from a couple of townspeople that they're very pleased with the road crew and especially with the roadside mowing.
Yeah.
I'll pass it on to the crew.
Yeah. Um, I'm the same ship. They, uh, I haven't gotten my usual phone calls. So must be something you're doing right down there. Rob?
Yeah, same thing. I did hear a comment about roadside mowing starting. They were pleased and I think that's about all I've heard. I, you know.
All right, I didn't entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?